Do we have a rule call of members, please?
Mr. Francis.
Here.
Mrs. Erwin Adams.
Here.
Mrs. McGinnis.
Here.
Mr. Mignon.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Pacifico.
Here.
Mr. McCully.
Here.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Romanowitz.
Here.
Thank you all.
Okay, before we get going, could we classify that as an executive session? Yeah, okay, so we had an athletic council meeting which was public and then we had a brief executive discussion to discuss personnel issues. So moving on, we will go to number two on our agenda, the Loretta Woodson Award.
Good evening. Tonight we have representing the Blair County Chapter of the Pennsylvania Association of School Retirees, Donna Mezner, who is the president, Connie Trafficant, and Bill Nuga Bower to present our, or their, Loretta Woodson Award. So I'll introduce Donna and let her start the presentation.
Thank you for allowing us to address you today. I am the president of the local Blair County Chapter of the Pennsylvania Association for School Retirees, and we represent any school retiree. It can be anyone from a custodian to teachers, administrators, everybody's welcome. So we do have our local chapter, we meet monthly, but most importantly, why we are here today is that we feel it's very important to recognize those who have given a lot to education. And we send out nomination forms for what we call the Loretta Woodson Award, and we give it out to one educator and one non educator that's a support staff person. And it just so happens that this year, we sent them out to all the districts, but both recipients are from the Altoona School District this year. They had the most applications, the most wonderful letters, and so that's what we're presenting tonight. So I would like to bring up Bill Nuga Bower, and many of you know Bill. Bill likes to talk, so he's going to explain a little bit about Loretta Woodson.
Loretta Woodson was an educator from the eastern part of the state, and she was a very fine educator and saved a lot of her money and put it in a trust so that when she retired, she could make awards to professionals and support staff people across the state of Pennsylvania if you were working at the time that you received the award. We have been very lucky here in Region Five in Blair County to have Altoona receive this award many times. I've been here many times before. I've been to Bellwood, I've been to other school districts at Holliesburg as well to present these. The award doesn't come with any money, but the award is a very special award because this lady recognized these abilities of these folks, and so she passed that knowledge on to members of Pennsylvania Association of School Retirees, and we continue this tradition throughout the state. The person will receive a very nice framed certificate as well as a pin, and then we're hoping that when they retire, they will join our group because we're very active in Blair County. There are seven school districts and intermediate unit that we draw from, and we meet, as Donna said, once a month, and we have charities and activities that we do in the community throughout the year. So we're a very active group. We have over 300 members, and we meet once a month at Marzonie's in Dunkinsville, and we get anywhere from 30 to 50 folks every month. And they're anxious to do things and give back to the community like they did when they were employed. So that's a little thumbnail about Loretta Woodson, and we're very pleased that her money hasn't run out yet.
Okay. Do you want to introduce our teacher first of all?
Our professional teacher, who is currently employed, is going to be shocked, but it's Lynn Ruggles, who works at the Learning Express. She's worked there since 1991. She thinks she's here for the other one.
Wonderful. Thank you.
This is for you, and recognition of unselfish dedication and exemplary service to Washington Jefferson Learning Express Preschool and the Altoona Area School District in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We thank you on behalf of the youth of today and the future of tomorrow.
Thank you.
We'll send you the membership information as soon as you retire.
Okay.
And our second person could not be here today, but Val, could you come up? When we request nominations, usually you get one or two about a person. We must have got about 12 or more for this next person, and this next person happens to be Padge, his mom. So she could not be here today because of medical issues and things, but she had so many people saying about her unselfishness and volunteering and helping out in classrooms and helping the districts wherever she was needed to be. And we really appreciate that, and I'm sure the district appreciates everything that she gave to the district. And so Val, if you could get this to Padge.
I'll stop by tonight.
Yes. Thank you, and tell her that we're all thinking about her.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
What's that called when you go in? Are you not supposed to be in a picture? What's that called? See, I'm old. I'm not supposed to remember. You're young. I don't know. I can't either.
Ashley Dunbar.
Like to wish both Lynn and Padge congratulations. Two extremely special educators and servants to public education and our students have really done an amazing job. So next presentation is not on the agenda, but we did want to take an opportunity tonight from the entire board and the public that are here to recognize Mr. Francis. Mr. Francis has been an amazing volunteer and servant to the Altoona Area School District and to the school board for 30 years. And this being his last meeting, we felt like there's really not an appropriate way to acknowledge the service and what he's meant to the community and to the school district. There's not really a sufficient way to do that. So we just wanted to thank you for everything that you've done. We will continue to do so. You will be missed by everyone here, and we want to thank you again from our teachers, from our students. You will not find a more dedicated and a more compassionate servant who advocates for education for students and for our teachers and the staff here in the Altoona Area School District. We talk about wearing the A. You will always wear the A, and we want to thank you, and we have a small token of our appreciation. This was something I know I was very appreciative to receive, and hopefully it's something that you can keep in your home. So Dave, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thanks for everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. It's so rewarding, and I like to thank everyone. You know, I said it before, this is just a great, a great board. It's a great, a great atmosphere, and we have an administrative staff, we have a board, and we have a great staff, but we care about kids, and that's the most important thing that everybody at this table cares about, are the kids, and that they're getting a great education. And just thank you. I'm going to miss it, and there's no question about it. I'm going to miss it. I'm going to miss the people. I'm going to miss different aspects of going to plays or different things. And thank you. And guys are going to do a great job. So we'll just thank everybody. Val, it's the two years that you did a heck of a job, and I got to say that during negotiations and different things, you spearheaded a lot of good things. So and Kelly, you're going to do well. So good luck to everybody, and I'm going to miss you, and if you ever need me, just give me a call. Thanks.
Thank you very much, and be careful what you offer. We may be reaching out sooner than later.
No doubt. He'll be back.
I agree. I agree. But again, thank you, and you know, just from the bottom of my heart, I mean, you were on the board that hired me almost 30 years ago now, so I do appreciate everything you've done for not only myself, but for our community as a school district.
Well, you were a good hire.
Thank you. You can become a consultant for the PSBA. That's probably the logical next step. They could probably use some help, so. And thank you, Dave. Your leadership for all of us sort of showing us the way and the proper decorum. Nobody runs a faster meeting than Dave. Greater Altoona Career Technology Center, I mean, he's like an auctioneer man. I could only hope to get that good someday, but he does a tremendous job. But thanks so much for all your leadership that you showed and demonstrated us.
Thank you.
All right, an emotional night here. Now we can move on to number three on our agenda, hearing from citizens. Do we have anybody who would like to step up to the mic and speak to us if you would like to have at it and just share your name and where you're from? No one? Okay. We'll move on to item number four. Approval of the regular board meeting minutes from the October 20th, 2025 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? We'll move on to five, list of payments. We are asked to approve the following list of payments, the cafeteria fund, the general fund, student activities, student activity club balances, and budget transfers under A. Under B, the financial reports were shared with us pertinent to the cafeteria, pertinent to the cafeteria income statement for September, and the cafeteria balance sheet for September. And most importantly, C, administration seeks approval to enter into a borrowing agreement with a financial institution for up to $40 million. These funds are necessary to maintain payroll and operational continuity during the federal and or state budget impasse. The agreement stipulates that interest payments will be deferred until the corresponding federal and or state funding is received. The anticipated expiration date for the short term borrowing is June 30th of 2026. Seeking a motion to approve items 5A through C. Do I have a second? Any discussion or questions on any of these, particularly C?
Just on C, what's the interest rate?
So the interest rates we're looking at right now are approximately 3.5% from one of the larger lending institutions in the area. We've seen anywhere from 3.5 to low fives. All of our locals that we have met with have been very gracious in their offers. Some of them have lending caps that are a little bit lower than what our needs may potentially be. Think of these more like lines of credit as opposed to a true loan where we would only be accumulating interest on monies that we would pull down in the event that there is a continued state budget impasse and we would have to do that. The reason we're asking for permission tonight is we need to be in a position that in the event that this would extend beyond the end of December, early January, we would be in a position where we would need to utilize borrowed funds in order to meet payroll and daily operational costs.
So what do you anticipate, say like for payroll in December, June? What would the first payment be? Would it be like eight million or 10 million?
I believe we can meet our operational expenses through the month of December, so we would have to borrow in January, and we would probably have to borrow about 10 million a month to cover costs.
So, and we pay interest on that, correct? We won't get reimbursed. Plus, we're losing money right now from our investments that we're paying our bills out right now.
Correct.
And what do you anticipate we're losing?
I think I calculated that we've lost about $300,000 year to date on.
$300,000 because the left and right can't meet to do a budget, and people in the middle like our educational system, taxpayers, I'm surprised taxpayers aren't up in arms. I'm upset. I want to find a moderate, right? I got vowed to run for state senate. You know, he's a great man. He'd be somebody that would work for the people, not just for the party. And I just think that it's ridiculous that we have to pay interest. We're losing money, and the taxpayers are just sitting there. No one's complaining. I don't hear anybody complain. I'm up in arms, but that's me. I'm up in arms when Notre Dame loses or Penn State wins. But I just, I just think that it's ridiculous. I'm surprised that more people aren't complaining. And these elected officials, what are they saying? I don't know. I'm completely baffled by the whole thing, and they should be ashamed of themselves.
We have met with local legislators, and they promised that they are working. The most recent information that we've received would indicate that there is an agreement pending or hopefully in the near future. We've been told as early as before Thanksgiving. But again, until that happens, we need to be in a position, which is why we're asking that in the event that there is an impasse, that we are in a position to remain operational.
I'm curious. Now, we're losing all this money here. What statewide, just all the money that's being lost, all the interest that's being paid statewide?
Absolutely. Not to mention the money that they've not distributed, that is money that they are, they are making revenue on. So they have generated by last count approximately $50 million in additional revenue from monies that have not been distributed just to school districts in interest, in interest.
And people have lost their jobs from the county level in different areas because of this. They should be ashamed, and I think they are, the taxpayers in school districts and counties and townships an apology.
Is it, it's the only state in the United States that doesn't have a budget? Is that correct? I mean, you've divided, you know, 103, 102 in the House, and it's just, yeah, there's no center.
There's got to be moderate somewhere in this state that can run a state, I think.
Okay, and I think it was recommended, you know, boards across the state, school boards across the state, put forth a resolution, but let's be honest, it wouldn't matter at all. So I mean, it's just exercise and BS. So that's why I didn't really get behind that.
I think the mistake I made at the technology center is I wanted to bring up this whole thing at the technology center to reunite, you know, the technology centers aboard, but you know, there's people, states like Holliesburg, there are only one or two representing this board. They're not representing, you know, they're not representing the whole board just themselves. So, but good luck with all that.
All right, anybody else? All right, well, all in favor of approving items 5A through C, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to six, why we're all here, education. Under A, administration would like approval to accept the UPMC donation, the amount of $560 to support T-shirts for the AAJHS National Junior Honor Society trip since spring of 2026. Under B, administration requests retroactive approval for the Donors Choose Project for supplies, STEM items, and flexible seating for Ebner Elementary in the amount of $391.85. Under C, administration requests approval of the attached revised MOU between AASD and Southern Alleghany's Workforce Development Board and the One Stop Partners. The revised MOU extends the agreement by one year, now ending June 30th, 2026. The MOU was first board approved on March 20th, 2023, with a term of March 1, 2023 through June 30th, 2025. Under D, we provided a list of volunteers to approve. And under E, we were provided a list of field trips to approve their secondary field trips. So I will seek a motion to approve items 6A through E. Do I have a second? Any discussion on any of these items? Okay. All in favor of approving items 6A through E, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to seven. We were provided a list of personnel agenda items, which we all had the opportunity to read. Do I have a motion to approve these items under 7A? Do I have a second? Any discussion on anything we saw in 7A?
No, but I'm glad to see that Justin finally gets to start next week after coming to all these meetings.
Yeah, that's awesome. Anybody else? All right, all in favor of approving item 7A, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Under E, business operations, under A. We can all read, and we see that Blair County Tax Claim Bureau has received and is requesting approval of the following repository bids which are listed. And under B, I think there were two capital reserve payments to approve. Seeking a motion to approve items 8A and B. Do I have a second, Justin? Anybody like to discuss any of these items? All right. We're in favor of approving items 8A and B, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to nine, facilities and maintenance. Administration requests and recommends acceptance of the base bid alternate number one and alternate number two from J.C. Orinson Incorporated to replace the storefront and windows at Logan Elementary School. Total project cost not to exceed $1,310,000, including contingency payment to be made from the capital reserve fund. Do I have a motion to approve item 9A? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving item 9A, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to 10, new business. Under A, administration requests approval to participate in TIPS National Cooperative Purchasing Program offered by Region Eight Education Service Center in Pittsburgh, Texas. Under B, administration requests and recommends approval to accept the proposal from GoTo to provide telephone, voice, conferencing, and related support services. One-time startup cost approximately $45,566 to be paid from the 2627 operating budget. Monthly recurring cost for the life of the 68-month contract approximately $7,784. Monthly recurring costs are neutral with existing services. Under C, administration requests approval to accept the proposal from UDNI to install and provide onboarding services for the GoTo telephone system priced not to exceed $41,250 to be paid from the 2627 operating budget. Under D, the Altoona Area School District Athletics Office requests approval for the Altoona Elementary Wrestling to use the AAHS Fieldhouse on November 15th, 2025 for the purpose of an elementary wrestling tournament. The cost of maintenance, overtime, and security will be paid by Altoona Elementary Wrestling. And finally, under E, motion to approve agreement with parents of student number 956786 in the district and to authorize the board president to sign any necessary paperwork to effectuate same. Do I have a motion to approve items 10A through E? Do I have a second? Anybody like to discuss any of this? I would just do my typical, since I will be signing the confidential settlement and general release. It's another area that I've sort of dug into, and it's amazing to me because I've worked with attorneys my whole career, but anytime we're involved in one of these suits or one of these settlements, because they're all settled, it seems. I'm used to when I work within a law firm, there's varying rates paid, right? You have a paralegal, you have an associate, and then you have a partner. In all these cases, they're all partner rates, right? They're all, the guy at the highest part of the food chain, most of them are like $400 an hour, and all the bills that we've paid throughout are in the $7,000 to $9,000 range. It's like a cookie cutter thing that's going on. And it's just another thing that annoys me, and I will continue to bring up with state legislators, unless I become one someday. I don't know yet, but may try, but just amazing. You know, there's never, paralegals never do any work on these cases. It just really blows my mind. There's no copying of papers or research done. It's all done by the partner level people. So just another thing, taxpayer money, and I understand we're protecting students and making sure they get all the things they need, but this has become a little significant industry for these law firms. So that's all I had to say on that. So that being said, anybody else like to chime in on anything? Okay, I will, in favor of approving items 10A through E, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 11, committee reports, any committee chair reports. Board president's report, I would just report, as Brad alluded to, that I was invited to be in an audience with Judy Ward and the rest of the superintendents in Blair County. You know, being on the board of Greater Altoona Career Technology and the board of IU8, and then this board, I felt like I could be a voice for everybody there. And, you know, Judy was great. My anger was not directed at her. It was directed at the system. So we brought up all the things that we bring up here quite routinely, and the fact that, you know, these cyber charter schools are accumulating massive funds in their reserve, and how unfair that is to us. Pointed to a fellow school district there, and you know, again, as I said before, they are challenged to put a roof on an 80-year-old building and a cyber charter school is going to build a building in this community for about probably 30 or 40 million dollars. I mean, something's really wrong. And as you know, I'll never shut up about it until this is solved. I hear that's on the table maybe, that we may solve it. And I was reading the audit report that the auditor general did in the state of Pennsylvania. How much does it cost us to provide cyber charter?
We can provide cyber in its most expensive form at about 20% of the rate that we're being charged for the minimum cyber student in a public cyber charter. For us, about 2,000 to 2,500 per student.
Okay, because in that report, I saw that the average, this isn't a special education student, this is just the average for a student in the state of Pennsylvania, is $13,000 is the tuition. in the state of Pennsylvania is thirteen thousand dollars is the tuition they're charging all the public schools in this state. Thirteen thousand, when we could do it for less than three. So people want to protest and this is something they would be mad about. This is money out of everybody in this community's pocket. And nobody seems to be upset about it except us. So again, every time I have an opportunity, I will, I will share some information with everybody and keep it on the front burner until this is solved. That's it for me. Now to better things with Ms. Krug.
Good evening. The second marking period is well underway and students are preparing for the holiday break with many exciting activities. The AHS girls soccer team won the district's sixth championship against state college after a very successful season. Junior Ashlyn Nos and freshman Emma Etters both qualified for the state cross-country meet in Hershey. Ashlyn finished eighth in the state. Congratulations to all of our fall athletes. After a successful fall sports season, winter sports like basketball, swimming, wrestling, indoor track and bocce are set to begin their seasons shortly. The Altoona area junior high school will have performances for their fall play, James and the Giant Peach on November twentieth, twenty-first and twenty-second. Tickets can be purchased at the door, ten dollars for adults and five dollars for students. A free senior citizen preview will be held Wednesday, November nineteenth at seven PM. The high school just performed their fall play, Monty Python's Educational Show, last weekend on Friday and Saturday, which was very successful and I was involved in myself. The advanced jazz band is beginning their winter performances throughout Altoona at places like Juniata Gap and the Altoona Grand Hotel. The Neil Armstrong Planetarium will have three showings of the classic holiday sky show, Season of Light, on Saturday, November twenty-second at eleven AM, twelve PM and one PM. Reservations will be taken, started, starting Friday, November fourteenth. Tickets are five dollars for adults and four dollars for students. Last week, Mrs. Skibek's Principles of Biomedical Science classes went to UPMC Altoona to learn about the different career opportunities UPMC has to offer. The annual AHS Turkey Bowl will be held on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth to kick off Thanksgiving break. The Turkey Bowl will include twelve teams of AHS juniors and seniors competing in a powder puff football game to see who will hold the twenty twenty-five championship title. The Altoona area school district is off school tomorrow, November eleventh for Veterans Day and Thanksgiving break will be from November twenty-sixth to December first this year. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Hatch?
Thank you. We had mentioned at our last board meeting, the passing of one of our very own, Mr. Ted Beam. Tonight, I would just like to utilize my time for a more formal acknowledgement of Ted. Ted was born on March twenty-fourth, nineteen fifty-two and passed on September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. On that date, we lost a colleague, teacher, friend, youth sports enthusiast and public servant in Ted Beam. Ted served the Altoona area school district as an English teacher at Keith Junior High School and at the Stevens Alternative School. His passion for public service led him to serve the city of Altoona as a city councilman and to serve Blair County as a county commissioner for a two-year term. His passion for youth sports and athletics led him to become a very respected PIAA sports official, where he retired after forty-three years. He officiated both basketball and football, where he earned the opportunity to officiate a PIAA state football championship, certainly a feather in any official's cap. After actively officiating, he assisted many officials from around the region as an officials evaluator. In addition to his officiating, Ted was actively involved with Penn State football for fifty-three seasons. First in broadcasting, then as a spotter working in the booth and finally as a Nittany Lions game clock operator at Beaver Stadium. He was also the game clock operator at the Bryce Jordan Center for the Penn State men's and women's basketball teams. Ted never stopped serving and never stopped caring for his family, friends and the community, and he will be sorely missed. Our deepest condolences to his wife, Carol, and to all of their extended family. Ted was a great person, great man, great to be around and he will be sorely missed. Wanted to acknowledge him tonight. So thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Moving on, do I, do we have an employee union's response? I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Thank you. Middle management? No? Mr. Beard, solicitor? Okay. I think then I will seek a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second? All in favor, please signify by.